Which will be led by Girl Scout Troop 310 from St. Mary's Catholic School. Troop Leader Kalida Morningstar and Assistant Troop Leader Girls, please come forward. But at first we will have a moment of silence, then followed by the Thunder Ladies, which will be led by Troop 310. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a proclamation recognizing the NCAA Division 1 indoor track and sees that helped make this happen and I just need to say that we had this year two of the Toptrun Center. And whereas through the collaborative partnership between the City of Albuquerque Parks and Recreation Department, the Albuquerque Convention, this event was a huge success. And whereas hosting this prestigious national championship brings positive attention to the City of Albuquerque and Shexco Athletics Department secured the bid to host the 2014 NCAA Men and Women's Indoor Track and Field Division 1 TV reports that this event brought 1,600 attendees, 3,800 room nights, generating $1 million for 520 athletes from 134 different schools during the NCAA Division. And whereas the City of Albuquerque Parks and Recreation Department has maintained and supported the indoor track for a period of nine years and continue to keep it in the professional council, the governing body of the City of Albuquerque hereby recognizes the NCAA Division 1 indoor body here that made it possible. So, thank you all very much for all your participation. It's amazing when all these entities work together.
And it brought different parts of the community together and for me being out of college for eight years.
I help you guys a lot, I'll be volunteering guys. Thank you, President. Thank you for holding out. Thank you.
Been with you for the past 13 years, who's been employed very successfully with Walmart and who just loves you guys. So, the City of Albuquerque hereby recognizes Aoussine Kris Baca for his dedication, commitment, leadership, brilliance, and sacrifice to New Mexico's children and youth and families. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Well, thank you so much for those great and kind words. I'm truly humbled. Nobody ever knows, you know, what your career path is going to be and I certainly did not know what my career path was going to be 41 years ago. I thought I was just gonna, you know, did my first job out of college and stay there for a couple of years and go on to other bigger and better things, but there were no bigger and better things than actually working in your community and working with families and children that need just a bit of assistance to make it on to bigger and better things for themselves. So, and as usual, none of this is done by yourself alone, besides me and my wife of soon to be 39 years, a matter of 50 years ago.
White and blue, our country is in distress. This militarized police department that we have here is a national problem. I'd like to introduce a friend of mine and a brother, his name's Royval, Mr. Cipriano Royval, and we've got a liberty zone idea here. He's gonna kind of give you a quick little rundown on it.
Hello, everybody. My name is Cipriano Royval and I just want to share a few little comments with you. New Mexico liberty informs the people and our public servants of the original state constitution, the republic. Republic and democracy are two very different forms of government. Republic, a government of the people operation. The reason for New Mexi-
Taxes to train other USAans, largely people of color and of low income, to become professional hired killers to murder on command with no conscience would be more evil, more selfish. I have paid no federal income tax for 35 years. I refuse, I refuse to pay to murder moms, dads, and children.
Fix this problem before you do it expeditiously. I had a boss once who used to caution me, a very senior boss, said, "Do it quickly, but don't hurry." And I fear that's what we're doing here, is hurry it. So, the consequences may not be well understood. I solicit that you defer both of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Aaron Shirley?
And I do support item P-41-1 on the agenda, the ballot measure amending the city charter to require advice approval of the city council regarding appointment of police chief.
Thank you.
Just asking if I don't condemn and not anything on what I brought before you, that you guys fail to always ask me a question on?
I'm gonna ask that everybody please cooperate or not, I am going to call for a recess. So, let's go and proceed. Our next speaker is Mike Gomez, followed by Mary Jobin, followed by Dinah Vargas, followed by Ellen Wagner, followed by Raymond Powell. And again, please, if you would respect the individuals that are at the podium speaking, please, you're allowed two minutes and when you applaud, you're taking up their time at the same time. Let's go and proceed.
There you go again, Harris. Looking at that iPad again while people are talking. That's just a wonderful thing, huh? That's just a wonderful thing. You don't care about anybody who doesn't make over $200,000 a year, do you, huh? You don't give a dog, you know? Just, just look at these signs, huh? You remember the time that you called the cops on me because I had a sign behind me, huh? You remember that, two years ago, huh? You remember that. I gave it to Channel 13, they remember that, huh? Huh? Now look at the signs, huh? Now look at them. You're a disgrace. All I gotta say is, you, Mr. Harris, you didn't want the DOJ to come in.
Please.
You, you, Ms. Judy Jones, didn't want the DOJ to come in. And what I'm really, really upset about is Mr. Winter. He didn't want the DOJ to come in. He deals with poor kids. He is an upper echelon of APS and he didn't want the DOJ to come in. What is it? Poor kids? Are you up with the Quavo all the time or something, with the rich kids or something? What about Rio Grande, huh? What about West Mesa? Huh? You didn't represent them when you didn't vote the DOJ to come in? Where's the mayor, huh? Where is the mayor also? Where is the mayor? He's such a coward. He's such a coward. And he hires this, this police, so-called police chief, Mr. Eden Gordon. I can't even call him Chief Eden. He's a disgrace. They didn't even let him talk at the last press conference because he doesn't know how to talk. He doesn't know how to do anything except to say yes to the mayor, yes to Susanna Martinez, yes to Jay McCloskey, yes to all the political money. That's what he says too. And all you folks, you gotta start to do something. We've been telling you for years.
Mary Jobin, followed by Dinah Vargas, followed by Raymond Powell. Mr. President, can I make a brief comment?
On my computer right here is the U.S. Department of Justice Civil Rights Division, April 10, 2014, report. That's what I'm reading, for those who want to know. And any of you who are willing, and if you wanna hold up signs, I just wanna make sure that the person who's speaking to us agrees that that's appropriate. I'll be happy to write a speech.
Let's go and proceed. Mary Jobin, proceed. Thank you.
Good evening, President Sanchez, Madam Chair and Council. My name is Mary Job. I'm here in solidarity with my city, state, and nation to end police violence.
When will you pass an ordinance prohibiting the mayor from negotiating an APOA contract that puts limitations on police oversight? You could easily overrule the city attorney's outrageous legal opinions that got oversight. All you have to do is own men.
The gentleman before me gave quite a few avenues, I think, that are worth pursuing. So, I hope that some of you are gonna at least hear that and maybe take some time out of your job.
To kill more people and to do it more frequently, a homeless female teenager and now an African-American veteran suffering from mental illness. In the recent APD killing of Armand Martin, SWAT engaged in precisely the tactics and procedures for which DOJ criticized it as escalating rather than de-escalating conflict. Counselor Harris asks on page 35, if you're reading along with me. SWAT is particularly deficient, noted the DOJ, at resolving confrontations involving barricaded subjects, suicidal subjects, and subjects in crisis. These are criminal deficiencies. Even after put on notice by DOJ, Mayor Barry and Chief Eden continue to allow this department to engage in unconstitutional policing. This is a police department that criminally and willfully operates under rules of engagement that produce unjust outcomes that lead to tragic deaths. We demand justice for the families. We demand that APD use lapel cam videos or they be fired. We demand independent police oversight with final authority to discipline. We demand that these officers involved in unjust shootings be indicted. We demand that officers engaged in unjustified use of force be disarmed. We demand that APD go into receivership. The city council here is viewed by the people as the first line in seeking justice, but it refuses to courageously confront this problem. It continues. And so, tonight, in the true spirit of democracy and with the seriousness to which it deserves and with the power given to us by the people of New Mexico and its court of law, we now serve a people's warrant for arrest on Albuquerque Police Chief Gordon Eden. He is charged with accessory after the fact. Gordon Eden, you have the right to remain silent. Anything you say can and will be used against you in a court of law. You have the right to the attorney. Mr. Eden, if you can afford an attorney, one will be provided for you.
You are charged with murder!
And Council President Sanchez, Council President Sanchez, no. Council President Sanchez, we're not leaving this podium. We're leaving this podium. I'm still responding to these charges. We're not leaving, we're not leaving this podium. I'm not leaving this podium. You are, you are walking away from justice. You are walking away from justice. You are, this is your-
We will be back in five minutes.
And we will be here too. And we will be here too. Go to the court and go to justice.
No justice, no peace. 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 The people united will never be divided. United will never be divided. The people 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 united will never be divided.
Thank you for staying, Councilwoman Benioff. Councilwoman Penny, I know justice, no peace.
No justice, no peace. No justice-
When we ask for justice, they run over. No justice, no peace. 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 No justice, no peace.
Fire Gordon Eden. 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 Fire Gordon Eden.
Our city. 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 Our city.
Listen, listen, listen. We're gonna reconvene this meeting as a people's meeting. We're gonna give people the right to speak.
That's right.
Come on up if you wanna speak.
It's Sweden people, come down to the door. It's Sweden people, not you, the government.
I don't need a recorder right now. I am tired of this. Mr. Don Harris, are you okay with having us getting shot down in the street? How could you? How could you be so-
Loveless!
You guys are knowing what's happening. You've seen the daily. Can you imagine? If it was one of your children, please don't, don't even go there. Quit sitting on your hands. We need you to be with us or be away, be out. Do that. Please don't let shoot one more person because you're shooting us. Every day you're shooting us. You know what? I think you need to be aware that they're shooting women too, 19-year-olds. And we're not even sure if they shot her in the back. Did you know there was 80 homeless people in jail right this minute that were paying taxpayer money?
$96!
A day! Please understand this speech to change. We need a change now.
Now!
Recall Mayor Barry.
Recall Mayor Barry.
Recall Mayor Barry. Recall Mayor Barry. Recall Mayor Barry. Recall Mayor Barry. Recall Mayor Barry. Recall Mayor Barry.
At this time, at this time, we would like to call for the resignation of Councilor Don Harris.
Yeah! Maybe, maybe, maybe. This is real skinny.
We would like to call for the resignation of Councilor Brad Winter. Councilor Don Harris purposely stuck Linda Martinez, who was part of the paternal order of police to infiltrate civilian police oversight. This is documented and this is, this is, this is a violation. This is purposely trying to destroy civilian oversight and law enforcement. Brad Winter purposely stuck Bambi Folk in there, who was totally partial and biased and supportive of police. He did this for many, many years. He purposely helped to destroy civilian oversight. Don Harris, it's time for you to go.
Go home! Go home! And we would appreciate if you cowards who are running in there, let us remind you that you represent us. We elect you. You should be afraid of the police, not us, okay? We are your constituents, okay? Don't run from us because we're running to you for help. You need to step the fuck up and do something already.
Quit sitting on your hands!
I have concrete recommendations or demands. I want Jonathan Mitchell's murder arrested.
And Terry lives. Terry lives!
Why, the APD, the lapel videos are gonna be released tomorrow for Armand's murder. Where, where is Mary Hawks? Where are the other lapel cameras? We want, we want Eden and Barry fired. Now.
I still don't have my brother Kendall Carroll. In the eyes of the police department, we're almost worth, we're, we're not even worth two cents.
No!
And the police department, as well as the government, has shown its inability or either its unwillingness to do whatever is necessary to protect life. So, our contention is, whenever as a people come to a conclusion that the government is unable to support, protect, or have proven that they do not want to protect us, that we ban them to people. Because we cannot call ourselves a people unless we stand together for the same issues. Because at the end of the day, we are all fighting the same issue. So, with that said, we're here and we're gonna be here today, tomorrow, the next day, and we're gonna stand and fight together, whether you like it or not, and you will respect this.
We're taxpayers too.
I went to school in the 1930s. I remember reading in the reading reader about the downside of Germany and the fascism. And that is where we're headed if we continue to let the police, who are just very similar to what they call the brown shirts in Nazi Germany, if we, if they can operate within purity and divide us and the reason that they're doing just the very same thing that they did in Germany, they choose the other. We choose, they, our police choose the other too. They choose the minority members. They choose the homeless. We're not homeless, so it's all right if we kill them. If, they choose the mentally ill. Well, we're not mentally ill. Remember, there, you probably don't remember, but there was a minister at the leader of the Nazi regime who was executed and he wrote a story. He wrote a letter just before he was executed. He said, "When I, when they first came from the Jews..."
We are now in that concession. We're taking a minute of break. There are several people that signed up to speak. Respect the oath of the people who signed up to speak. This meeting, not only for this meeting, but I would prefer to give people an opportunity to speak. We are-
First, they came from the Jews. I was from the Jews.
Please to respect the chamber.
And they came from homosexuals, but I wasn't a homosexual. And then they-
Pam, we've got a meeting to conduct here. Please respect the chamber. This is Scott. President Sanchez, this is no longer, this is no longer your meeting. This is no longer your meeting. This is the people's meeting. This is the Marxist convention. If you're not supposed to, you can come over here. We have to listen. Councilman Sanchez, you are, you are, you are, you are going to see right now, this is the people's meeting. If you would like to speak, you may come over here, President Sanchez, and you can join the people. Grandma, immediate forumarium on all SWAT activity. Gone. We are here to listen to each and every one of you. No, you have not been listening, and so this is our meeting. There has not been democracy in the city where there have been SWAT killed people in the streets. This is our meeting. And so, if you would like to speak, you are welcome to, like everyone else, but you're gonna have to come over here and get in line. You move the-
I am wearing a black armband tonight as a sign of mourning. I mourn that another resident of Albuquerque has been shot dead by Albuquerque police. I mourn that APD cannot seem to figure out how to diffuse conflict without using illegal force. Yet again, the person killed was a person of color with a history of mental health issues. Yet again, the residents of Albuquerque saw a paramilitary force respond to a domestic violence call. We yearn, we yearn. Shut up! We yearn to do something on a Monday evening other than this.
I am going to adjourn.
We would rather take advantage of multicultural activities in our community, despite on albertikertodo.com. But we won't be able to think about having fun until we can watch the news without fear of hearing about another officer-involved shooting. We have asked the police chief to stop the killings, to no avail. We have asked Mayor Barry to stop the killings, but the killings continue. We have asked city council to stop the killings, but the killings continue. We have asked DA Kerry Brandenbrenn to stop the killings, to no avail. We have asked New Mexico Attorney General Derek King to stop the killings, but they continue. I bring to Senator Martin Heinrich, asking what will he do to stop the killings? The DOJ Civil Rights Division has done its job. They concluded APD has a culture of aggression. Who has the courage to tell APD to stand down? Will all those city councilors who pledged to help end the killings, please stand up right now and be counted? Will you stand up? And will you use-
Where's Mayor Barry? I have a right to respect me for being here. We have led control of this meeting. This meeting is officially a break.
Will you use your authority over the city's purse strings to stop the killings? You have the power to threaten to cut APD's funding until it establishes a pattern and practice of policing that is constitutional. If you, one more sentence, one more sentence. If you city councilors continue to approve funding for an unconstitutional APD, doesn't that make you nine complicit in their crimes?
I would like to talk my turn. I would like to say that there is need for an audit by the OIA. The top salary in 2014 was a police officer, Gray P.E.R. Robert Carey gets paid $150,73.16 as the list goes on. There are eighty salaries that are off police departments.
I wanna say something first. I wanna say thank you to all of you for standing here and actually being brave enough to stand here. I wanna say to that woman there, that we are letting everybody talk and she's being rude and disrespectful to everyone. So, if you would please respect everyone and let everyone talk, that'd be great. Let everybody rest, talk. And APD needs to be shut down.
Counselors, I'm Anna, like whoever's in the Albuquerque taxpayer voter, and I am tired of spending every other money here trying to figure out who is going to clean up this fucking mess. I'm sorry to use French, but that's the only word that covers it right now, okay? I'm presenting you with a petition asking for a grand jury investigation into this court and police shootings. We think that it's time to take a drastic intervention. We'd appreciate if you would appoint-
Check, 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 one, two, check.
................................................................................................ you, uh, step up and do something now, like last year.
But again, we're not gonna be able to take care of these issues tonight.
Okay, now, I think we're a lot of different times. And I don't know why, uh, the pass is always getting the, the, the opinions, or the people in the suits will always have the opinion.
I mean, this, and unfortunately, this is the only venue that the public has to voice your opinion.
Mayor Barry is what we're trying to say. Instead, they're listening to some suit, some suit who's spineless, and doesn't have the guts to actually speak to the people directly, but has to do so via proxy through the, through the media that always contains the status quo that they're trying to say. So what we're trying to do here is make sure that everybody has the right to get heard. A lot of times, the people who have microphone, who have the capacity to speak, but again, the purpose is to get people to hear this speech. We know that the city council has as its main priority, its city budget, then how come they don't maintain the city budget that doesn't go inherently for APD? But unfortunately, I didn't feel I had the right to meet the people, and I adjourned the meeting. So, tho- those are the, those are the demands. Those are the demands.
I'm worried about my safety. I'm worried about the safety of the members of the public who are here tonight, and also the members, members of the council. But again, I just think that we had no, I had no alternative for the safety of the public, for the safety of this council, to adjourn this meeting this evening. I didn't even know Tefan had left. I know he was here earlier.
Forty-nine percent of the city budget is spent on APD because of all the lawsuits.
I'm not sure what took place, but I think that he has to be the chair for his alone election. But this is really an unfortunate situation to see.
The state council, the state council, and the city budget, and so we should not be spending forty-nine percent of the city budget on APD.
Well, again, we need to take control of what's going on here at the city hall, at city hall with the council meeting. We still have a lot of business here.
We're Mayor Barry.
The city meeting, there was a lot of business involved.
We're Mayor Barry.
It had been heck of a conversation. But I felt bad about all the people who signed up to speak. Again, this is what's going on here. We've got to just, we've got to listen. We're saying this is, we're saying this is. It's very difficult. We're tired of seeing this. I care about Albuquerque. I care about the public. I care about the Albuquerque police department. Uh, we are in a crisis situation, like I said, uh, for several years. We've got some serious problems. They need to be addressed, but we can't address them by not discussing city business.
Fire Mayor Barry! Fire the fucking chief! Fire the fucking chief! Fire the fucking chief! Fire the fucking chief! Fire the mad 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 chief!
So, it comes to me that, uh,
I just have it up to the monster car.
The council members would like to address this, and I might invite them down.
So you can come down.
We discussed the national, national administration.
What is that? But I think that we need to.
Come on up. You can join us.
But I think.
If you have a favor, comment, we'll give it to you.
Sit down.
Join the people over here, and then you can speak to me.
What I was saying is that I.
Fire the mayor! Fire the mayor! Fire the mayor!
The work that you are doing is definitely gonna transform our community. It's the people that create change. But I think that what we need to do now, if everybody wants to be heard and have their voices heard, because most of the, the members on this council are doing their very best to try to create change, and I think they're all open. I think they're all open to listening to a bunch of, a bunch of ideas that you guys are proposing. But I, we have to work together to come up with solutions. You know, at the end of the day, at the end of the day, there's a lot of things being introduced.
Quiet! Quiet! Let her talk! Let her talk! Let her talk!
I'll take you higher now.
That's that!
You saw that woman.
I think that, now, 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 this is about APD? Now, now, um, this is.
If you saw that woman, she'll come to the floor for APD and trespassing.
Yeah. This is about coming together as a community. I think that we really have to work hard to create this change, and I think that people are creating the change, and I think the police, the lady who's here who's supporting, she's voicing her same concerns, but we need to get her live, sit down, and let's be heard.
You know, I, 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 I like it. One of the things that I think is a problem, and they were speaking for different sides at the podium, so, since the meeting is adjourned and we're rewriting the rules, if the council is remaining, would like to come down and speak with us here. I would appreciate it. It's time to shut down. Everyone gets to sit down and talk. All right. So I would like, so I would like to shut down. As I was saying, instead of re-convening the meeting, the council is meeting, they're going to come down here.
On the streets, we would be.
So I would like, I would like to come down. And we're going to have a dialogue with the people, as people, as a council in a role of people.
I'd ask you, you know, what, what does something like this happen say to you, bro?
Well, it says that, um, there's not only frustration, but the community has come to a point where I think they're saying, you're not paying attention. And I purposely stayed here, not because of bravery or anything else, but I want them to know that I listen. Do I have the answers? Can I change things by tomorrow? No, but I certainly will take the time, the energy, and make sure that I'm, uh, folks, the community knows that I'm with them. That's where I come from, and that's where I belong.
Do you feel that this is disrespectful to the council chambers? I know I've heard some people saying this.
No.
If people are so frustrated that they need to do this, then I think that we need to do this.
I believe in civil disobedience. I believe in redress of government. That's what's happening. People are saying, you know, we need to be paid attention to. That's all they're saying.
Meeting will come to order.
Let's have this meeting in a water place.
Now. Everybody understand that we are in control. We have taken our streets back. Now, we can wait until Congress takes it on. Where are women? Where are women? Anybody want to hear how this will be done? We are the people, remember that. We cannot have our people being shot in the street. This is unacceptable!
Um, every single councillor, every single mayor, every single district attorney that's violated human and civil rights, it's time that, that we, the people, take action. It's time that our elected officials listen. And it's time that those that are culprits for what has happened resign. Councilor Don Harris is guilty. Councilor Brad Winter is guilty. Uh, Mayor Barry is guilty. His attorney Kerry Brandonburg is guilty. They all need to resign.
Don Harris is drunk. We need to order. I'd like to call it, and the first item of business is a vote, a vote of confidence on Mayor Barry. Is there a confidence on Mayor Barry? Oh, it's not, oh, the council. Do we have, do we have a vote of no confidence on the mayor?
No confidence. No confidence in the mayor.
The people's city, okay? The people's, the people, the people's city council has just unanimously voted no confidence in Mayor Barry.
No confidence.
That's on the business. Would we like a vote, like a vote of no confidence on the Chief Administrative Officer Rob Barry? Each councillor, do you have a vote of no confidence on Chief?
I have no confidence.
No confidence. That is a unanimous vote of no confidence.
You don't sit there. You're not elected to sit behind this chair.
You're gonna have to wait your turn.
Why don't you get out of those chairs?
You can wait your turn.
You're not elected to sit behind those seats.
You're sitting in those chairs.
You're not elected. You are not elected to sit behind those seats.
Unless I will, then this is what the law, this is what the law looks like. 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 This is what the law looks like.
President, I know I was, I probably go with you.
Next point of business. Next one of business. We have our demand. We have our demand. Thank you. Our councillors, councillors, I first demand, we ask you to make it a local ordinance to require that each police officer, who has an encounter with an individual, have their camera on and if he's off, then he's fired. And he's fired!
I will second that motion.
And it's, that is the unanimous vote from the crowd that every police officer have their own camera video.
Absolutely.
Then they're fired. And good vote.
Councillor, Councillor Gairdus, uh, supports that idea.
But, uh, demand number two. We demand, and we ask you to give us independent police oversight with the ability to fire dissident cops. Over the cheek. Will you get that to us, officers?
Oh, wait, we have that power? We can do that? Then, uh, Councillor, Councillor Gairdus supports that idea, and it's really right.
I second it. You are doing the same.
Two people, please remove her. Please remove her. President, order.
Just ignore this woman.
Order!
Okay, can we have some order, um?
When the process is broken, you're interrupted, you fix it.
Please have gates talked removed? Thank you.
Okay. Can we have some order here, um? Now, uh, we'd like to say that, go ahead.
Luis, I'd like, I'd like, uh, permission from the council for a public comment from Arthur about the police.
Yes, who would you like this?
Public comment, uh, does, does all, uh, you ladies members of the state of California agree with the public comment?
I agree.
Okay, and in the eyes of our police department, our lives aren't worth two cents. And the police department, as well as the government, has shown its inability, or either its unwillingness to do whatever is necessary to protect life. We all contend.
We respect each other.
Our condition is that, whenever a people come to the conclusion that the government, which we have supported, proves itself unable to protect our lives because we have either the wrong living situations, the wrong mental capacity, or they just feel that we shouldn't make a phone call. We are not, all human beings, and we are not human beings. We all band together. Unless we band together, how can we call ourselves humans?
Thank you, Arthur. Thank you, Arthur.
Thank you, Arthur. Oh, yes. Just ignore her. Ignore this woman.
I want you to hear, ignore her. Who is with?
May we talk about gates talked removed?
Time's off. The time is off.
Please talk about gates talked removed.
The president, the president is.
Lock her. Remove the gown locker, please. She's a threat to the community.
Can we have some, right?
Are we here to work for the people of Albuquerque?
Yes, yes, you know her.
Are we here to work to stop the police chains around women and sisters now?
Yes.
Can I hear you? Can I hear you?
Yes, we are.
Are we here to fight for justice?
Yes!
Are we here to fight for peace?
Yes!
Are we here to fight for equality for all?
Yes!
Are we here to fight for democracy?
Yes!
Freedom for all?
Yes!
Go liberty! Liberty is to be out of the walk down the street without being scared to be shot by a police officer. He's paid by our tax dollars. Are we here for that?
Yes!
May I declare? May I declare that we, this has happened here today. It has happened here today because the people are tired of the lack of justice. People are tired of being ruled by police. People are tired of city councillors and, and mayors and police chiefs that have not listened to the people. That's why this has happened here today.
And we're wanting like, uh, the council. I think that's to all, like, sit down and let's talk everything out. Talk it out, reveal the wrongs. Let the wrongs take the podium.
They opened up the president's station.
I'd like to say something. I, I would like to say that this, uh, this action that we've taken tonight has put the city on notice that the status quo is unacceptable.
The people will never be defeated. The people united will never be defeated. The people united will never be defeated. The people united will never be defeated. No justice, no peace. No justice, no peace. No justice, no peace.
No justice, no peace.
Okay, 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 okay. You know, it's, it's, it's mostly time to bring you.
Okay, yes, it's time to, it's time to, let's, let's decide what we're gonna do.
Let's try one set down.
Okay, do you have a suggestion? It's probably time for our city government to take a look.
We made our point. We made our point.
Go ahead, David. Go ahead, David. David, I think you're, go ahead, David, David has the clear.
Councillors, councillors, I make a motion that we adjourn the people's meeting, but before we do that, we encourage everyone to come out to a massive protest in the streets of Albuquerque. A civil rights peaceful protest that we will organize in the coming weeks.
Invade the nation.
Watch for it. If you're seeing this from out of state, come to Albuquerque for that. We will spend the next two weeks organizing that march, and we will leave this chambers adjourned chanting now.
There's a motion to adjourn the people's meeting. Okay. There's a second, a second adjournment.
I, I second the adjournment. I think we have people lined up for public comment. I would like to, uh, get some of this. Right here.
Now, it's time to stop, everybody. We've made our point. It's gonna turn into a circus now.
Wait, sir. Yes, that's right. The city is a game. No justice, no peace. 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 Yeah, just like that, sacred. Hey, the meeting might have been interrupted, but I went the agenda, and I hope that you guys get around to knowing the political issues and the appointment of the APD chief and fire chief. That is the agenda. This is the last meeting I've been to. Thank you. Hey, folks, everybody, just stop, do a good time, I'll clean up. I'll leave the place like we found it.
At this point, taking a meeting like this, I think many councillors commented they've never seen anything like this here.
So unmuted the office, but the people want to be heard, and, and they really are being listened to by this council and others. It just, the whole process is gonna take time, and it's, it's gonna be a, a long healing process.
How important was it for you to stay here at this one? I mean, you're, at this point, the only councillor I see, and how important was it for you to stay here and see that some sort of resolution came to the end of this?
I just had to stand with the people. That's why.
Thank you.